Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the regularly scheduled Thousand Oaks City Council meeting for Tuesday, May 29, 2007. If you'd all please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll for tonight's meeting, please?
Councilmember Gillette is absent at this time. Councilmember Bill de la Peña, present. Councilmember Clancy.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Irwin, present. Mayor Fox.
Here. Do we have any special announcements or requests for continuance of any of the public hearing items or items on the agenda? Okay, hearing none. We'll move to special presentations and let me move down to the podium. It's always an exciting time for the city to recognize our outstanding young athletes and students that we have here in Thousand Oaks. Tonight, we're honoring two schools, Westlake and Thousand Oaks High School, and then we'll be doing a special presentation later on for the City of Thousand Oaks, where TOTV did a special tribute to the city. First, I want to take a moment to recognize some extraordinary accomplishments for the young athletes from both Thousand Oaks and Westlake High School. Tonight, we're looking at swimmers, and for those of you that don't know much about swimming competition, if I'm not mistaken, those are the athletes that get up very early in the morning to go to practice and put in some very, very long days. In addition to being student athletes, they, of course, maintain their studies, they're involved with their families, and many extracurricular activities. So when you're a student athlete, it says a lot about you, win, lose, or draw, but it's even more special when you get on the field of play, as it were, the pool of play, and demonstrates such outstanding athletic talent. Tonight, we'll begin by recognizing Westlake High School Girls Division Two Champions, CIF Champions, and I'd like to invite up to the podium Coach Ermas, who could introduce the team and tell us a little bit about this year's championship season. Coach?
Thank you very much. Before I introduce the girls, I'd like to thank the council for recognizing these young ladies and their accomplishments. Sometimes the aquatics take backseats to bigger sports, and it's wonderful that you guys have taken the time to recognize them and their efforts, and as the mayor said, they put in a lot of time outside of school, and many of them swim year-round, so I appreciate all of their efforts. They've been a great asset to the school and to the program. Also, I'd like to thank our athletic director, Drew Pasalacqua, who's here today, for all his support, and our principal, Ron Lepari, who has always been behind the aquatics program. This year's CIF championship team, this is the first CIF championship since 1983. It's been quite a while. Many coaches go without ever winning a championship. I've been fortunate enough to have a wonderful group of girls, top caliber girls. This year, coming into the CIF championship meet, we felt that we had a shot at winning it, and after prelims were over, we felt that we could actually come away with the win. It came down to the very end of the meet, and we were behind Thousand Oaks, and fortunately for us, they did not fail at a 400 freestyle relay, and I do say fortunately, and we came in second in that last relay to ice it, and the girls did great. Everyone swam outstanding times the entire meet. We have, in this group, two automatic All-America girls who swim two events each, and they're automatic, which means they're top 130 times in the nation, so that's an outstanding accomplishment. We also have two consideration All-America time relays, the 200 freestyle and 400 freestyle relays, and I'm very, very proud of all of these girls, and we get them all back next year, so we're looking to repeat. So, without any further ado, I'd like to introduce the girls. Brooke Anderson.
We're gonna have our mayor come out here and shake hands.
I beg your pardon, okay.
You got the pins?
Hmm? Got the pins.
Brooke Anderson. Amanda McNutt. Emma Carson. And even though everyone in the entire CIF continuously mispronounces her name, I will do it correctly. Nora Derago. Jackie Broussot. Megan Nolan Christensen. And Aisling Smalling. And, if I'm not mistaken, I'm going to quickly announce our CIF individual champions. Jackie Broussot, step forward. Jackie was our 50 freestyle CIF champion this year with an automatic All-America time. And the members of our 200 freestyle relay, Aisling Smalling, Jackie Broussot, and Marissa. We're missing one person, I was trying to remember who we're missing, and Iris Yan, who's not able to be here this evening. I'll quickly mention also that we broke five school records this year, so it was a wonderful year all the way around. Thank you very much, girls.
Also recognizing Thousand Oaks High School tonight, and so I'd like to invite up Coach Mike Giles. Coach? Oh, there you are. Mike's doing double duty tonight, and they are Day Two, CIF Division Two's swimming competition champions, and they're here tonight, and so, Mike, maybe you can introduce the team and tell us a little bit about your season.
Well, first of all, thank you very much for inviting us out here tonight, and this is Merrick, and he's here to celebrate as well. We're here for Camille Duckett, representing Thousand Oaks, who was phenomenal this year. We want to congratulate too, Westlake as well, for doing such a phenomenal job, but I think you brought it up, that for Caneo Valley, they have two top teams, as strong as they were in the entire division. He's phenomenal, just phenomenal. One thing I should know, that our team was actually reading CIF, we were impressed. We were about 3 minutes and 45 seconds away from being right there with Westlake, and Westlake was able to catch us and take it at the end. Next up, we had, Camille was an individual CIF champion in a 100 freestyle, and right up there, runner-up in the 200, right, at a 149, phenomenal swims, phenomenal times, so we want to congratulate Camille for doing an awesome job, and, and that's about it. Thank you very much. Okay.
Camille, why don't you, yeah, Camille, why don't you come on up?
Yeah, we're gonna hand her up.
You wanna do it out there? Okay, great.
All right.
Yeah, absolutely.
And councilmembers?
Okay, our last presentation this evening is looking at the City of Thousand Oaks, which was recently the subject of a short feature entitled "Something Special." We'd like to share this short piece of film with you. Throughout the month, KEY News traveled throughout the tri-county area highlighting unique communities. Thousand Oaks segment includes interviews with Councilmember Dennis Gillette and Community and Cultural Service Director Tom Mitzi. So at this time, I'd like to invite TOTV to put the "Something Special" cut on there, and our community and our residents can take a look.
Now, to our "Something Special" reports, it's referred to by TO by locals, but Thousand Oaks features a long list of little luxuries for its residents. From Broadway shows to top-notch schools, the city has it all. In this edition of "Something Special," Key News reporter Regina Reese takes us to Thousand Oaks.
Bienvenue, irashai, bienvenidos. Welcome to Thousand Oaks and its gardens of the world. Here you can stop and smell the roses, or gaze into the mystical chain fountain inspired by historic Italian architecture. A delicate balance and harmony can be found in the Japanese garden.
A place of quiet, and peace, and joy, and beauty, and that's really what we strive to do here, is make every guest experience memorable and relaxing from the day-to-day, you know, busyness that most people have in their lives.
There's joy for everyone here. The classical French gardens' waterfalls amaze the kids. A stroll through the Mission Garden will remind you of the Mission in Santa Barbara because it's a replica of it. The Hogan family donated this cultural landmark to Thousand Oaks. It's just one of many hallmark locations that make the city's quality of life extraordinary.
We've gone from the Oakdale Grocery Store and Saturday Night Gathering Point for the Cowboys that used to herd cattle in the area, to what I believe to be one of the finest small cities anywhere in the country.
You can call Dennis Gillette a staple in Thousand Oaks. Residents elected Gillette as mayor twice, city council member three times, and also as police chief, but one honorary official you may not be aware of. MGM's Leo the Lion, once named the honorary mayor. Let me explain. An amusement park called Jungleland used to be where City Hall stands today. It had animal shows and housed many furry movie stars, including Leo the Lion.
For years, it was the winter staging area for Big John Strong Circus and other circus performers that traveled throughout the country. This is where they wintered, and Jungleland was started as a haven for the animals that were used in the circuses and used in the movies.
And speaking of movies, Thousand Oaks has had its share of major motion pictures shot here. The shootout at the end of 1967's Bonnie and Clyde took place on Westlake Boulevard, and it's a mad, 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 mad world. The clearance called to land at the Conejo Airport, that was also in Thousand Oaks. The famous faces stretched to Thousand Oaks High School. Notable former students include Olympic medalist Marion Jones, actors Kurt Russell and Michael Richards. From the big screen to the main stage, the Thousand Oaks Civic Arts Plaza hosts world-class performances.
Almost every, literally every Broadway musical that has toured has been here. Barry Manilow, Eliza Minnelli, Kenny Loggins, the list goes on and on.
Another kind of stage, The Links, attracts world-class athletes. Tiger Woods played at the Sherwood Country Club last year for the Target World Challenge. It's a perfect place to tee off. You have breathtaking mountain views and eight old oak trees lining the cores. Ah, yes, the oak trees. They are somewhat the core of this city. Thousand Oaks got its name because there are more than 50,000 oak trees in the city. It's actually a designated tree city, USA. For example, this gigantic sycamore tree, it's a historical landmark. It's more than 250 years old. Now, folks have a saying here in Thousand Oaks, "Whatever you do, don't hurt a tree." That very old tree and historical landmark stands tall, very tall, at the Stagecoach Inn Museum. It used to be the Grand Hotel in 1876, a popular place for people traveling between Santa Barbara and Los Angeles. The inn serves as an authentic reminder of the area's pioneer days. Thousand Oaks has come a long way since its incorporation in 1964, and residents say the quality of life still makes it one of the best cities in the country.
Trying to maintain all of those balances, quality of life, education, recreation, governance, that's what we try to do, and so far, I think that the city has done an exceptional job of maintaining that balance.
A postcard-perfect city that residents say just keeps on getting better. Reporting on "Something Special" in Thousand Oaks, I'm Regina Reese for Key News.
Mr. Mitnick, you wanna make any comments about that? I think it's appropriate, the city manager.
I won't comment on that one. Does the council like that?
Yes.
I wish we could take credit for that as your staff, but the city had nothing to do with that. Channel 3 did that all on their own, and I think it's a real testimony to what a great community this is, so we thought that would be a good warm-up for the council before we get into the budget study session.
Appreciate that.
That did air on Friday, so.
On behalf of the council, you know, they couldn't have picked a better representative, Mr. Gillette, not just because of your years in terms of being elected bodies, but you really truly are the council historian, and you're the right guy, absolutely the right guy to talk about the city and this community, and it was good to see you up there, and hope everybody had an opportunity to view that video. Are we gonna show that a couple more times on TOTV?
We'll be glad, staff will be glad to work with Channel 3 to make sure we get the okay to do it, and if something we do, we'll gladly do so.
Very good. Okay. Sure. Mr. Gillette?
It's unfortunate she couldn't have included all the comments. I talked for, it must have been a couple of hours. She finally said enough already, so, thank you.
All right. That moves us to item six. We have no public comment tonight. Item seven is the City Redevelopment Agency Consent Calendar. Do we have any items? Councilmember Bill de la Peña.
I'd like to pull items C, D, E, and F. Just kidding.
All right. Very good. Wow, just keeps getting better. Yeah, I just wanna remind you that I'll be doing the comedy, though, so don't make it happen to that.
I couldn't resist.
Okay. Okay. Any, Dr. Clancy, would you like to pull an item?
Mr. Mayor, I have no desire to pull an item, however, I think while the iron's hot, I'd like to move the consent calendar.
Okay, very good. Dr. Clancy moves the consent calendar discussion on that. Vote, please.
Motion carries 5-0.
That is approved. That takes us into item eight, which is our study session on the proposed '07, '08, '09 operating budget. I want to remind council, it's a study session, and so we're gonna have a number of reports tonight, starting with our Finance Director Candace Hong, and then I think she's gonna dish it off to a few other staff members. Genny?
Yes, I want to introduce Brent Sakaida, our Budget Manager, and John Adams, the Deputy Finance Director. The three of us are gonna be walking you through the presentation tonight, and we'll start with Brent.
Good evening, Mayor Fox, councilmembers, residents, and staff. Tonight during this study session, staff will be presenting the fiscal year 2007, 2008, fiscal year 2008, 2009, Proposed City and Redevelopment Agency Operating Budget. I'll be providing an introduction of the proposed operating budget process. The city's Finance Director Candace Hong will be addressing citywide issues related to the proposed operating budget, and the Deputy Finance Director, John Adams, will be addressing general fund highlights. The city started the budget process with a kickoff meeting on January 10th of this year, and since then, staff has, staff in various departments have worked on user fees, which went to public hearing on April 24th, the capital improvements program budget, which went to study session on April 24th, and the proposed operating budget, which will be brought back to city council for public hearing with the capital improvements program budget on June 12th. The proposed operating budget book before you tonight is broken up into various sections, as noted. It starts with a budget message from the city manager, then goes through the general fund summaries and departments, the enterprise fund, other various funds, and then, as you can see, the redevelopment agency, which is on the bottom of the presentation. The proposed operating budget book is balanced, meaning that projected operating revenues equals projected operating expenditures. During the preparation of the proposed operating budget, the city incorporated various tools and documents, including city council goals and priorities, minimum community standards, the financial strategic plan, and performance measures. We also wanted to discuss the processes the city went through during the past six months related to the revised objectives and performance measure page of the operating budget. The city's budget team met with each department to discuss the expectations of city management and the importance of spending quality time to develop objectives and performance measures that would best describe what is most important to each division. With the objectives and performance measure pages developed for this proposed biennial budget, we have built a solid foundation on which we can continue to improve on during the upcoming years. Each division prepared a mission statement, a goal or goals of the division for the next two years, noted prior budget accomplishments, and objectives for the upcoming two fiscal years, which in most cases utilize the minimum community standards, and documented performance measures indicators that quantify how each division is meeting their various objectives. It has been a major undertaking, but it has been a valuable exercise and provides the city with another useful tool that will improve the budget process in the future. Now, I'd like to turn it over to Candace Hong, who will address various citywide issues that the city will be facing during the next two fiscal years.
Okay, Mayor and councilmembers, I will update you on the following five items. The key issues facing the City of Thousand Oaks, total appropriations in your two-year capital operating budget, the highlights of the major funds other than the general fund, department staffing, and just show how the capital budget integrates with the operating budget that's before you tonight. There's a number of key issues that are facing the City of Thousand Oaks that were highlighted in the budget message. One is the economic picture, which we generally see as being positive for the next two years, and this optimistic view is supported by a number of strong economic factors, such as a strong housing market, continued demand for new office construction, low vacancy rates, a stable and generally educated and skilled workforce with a strong component of high-paying jobs, an ongoing low unemployment rate, and consistently overall job growth in many economic sectors. So, this with a high quality of life in Caneo Valley, supported by the educational and public services that are positive, the area is continuing to be an attraction for increased economic investment activity. We are seeing, though, in the next years, due to some changes with the Oaks Mall, that the fourth quarter ended on December 20, 2006, that our sales tax revenue is showing a somewhat decline. For the last six months, we had seen a 1.3% decline compared to a year earlier, and that's compared to a 0.5% increase statewide. And the industries in our economy that are seeing the largest decline were auto and transportation and building and construction. New auto sales declined 10%. However, businesses with the largest increases were fuel and service stations and restaurants and hotels. So, we've had, because we have a mixed economy, that's a good thing, it's kind of insulated us from some of the changes with the sales and auto sales, and with some of the changes we're seeing at the Oaks Mall, but with our optimism is that as new areas come online with the Oaks Mall being renovated and some of the other projects we're seeing coming forward, where our future sales tax revenue in the second year are, we show a slight increase, and John will get more into that when he talks about revenue in the general fund. Our retirement and other post-employment benefits was another area that you'll see some changes in the operating budget. As you know, you took action last month in April to increase or make a contribution towards your other post-employment health benefits for retirees. That $6 million transaction that we approved for 2006-7, which prefunds that benefit, is actually in, you'll see that in the expenditure line in your revised operating budget, and some of you have already mentioned that to me, why did the budget go up in that area? And that was because we showed that expenditure in 2006-7. The City of Thousand Oaks has held the line, though, on retiree health benefits overall, and so our rate is stabilized at 11.4%, and we project that to continue for the next couple of years, and our actuarial calculation for the OPEB obligation, we expect that to be stabilized also at 1.2 million. So we are seeing that as a positive, that it's pretty much staying the same. Law enforcement costs in this next year budget show an increase. We have the first year an 8.4% increase, and then a 4.5% increase in the second year. We've added a couple new positions and get into that a little bit. We're also seeing some need to comply with regulatory requirements and additional costs related to that. The state regional water quality board is expected to cost additional amount of $175,000 in the general fund in the next two, each of the next two years, and there's potential for it to go much higher. Also, opportunities exist for, in infrastructure area, for infrastructure funding, we are seeing that with Proposition 1B, that we have an additional revenue source coming in from that, so that's helping with some of our streets projects. And finally, there's, we are now moving from a growth to a maintenance-oriented city, and as our population stabilizes and revenues are not increasing, our infrastructure is aging. We're now seeing another dynamic in our budget. There are more requests for capital projects being funded out of the general fund, and as Thousand Oaks has built up reserves, we're now using more of our reserves to fund much-needed infrastructure, maintenance, and building enhancements, and parks, and continue to improve the quality of life. So, on the next slide, we see the summary of what the 20078 citywide budget looks like. It's a total between operating and capital of $214 million operating budget, operating and capital budget. We are using reserves of about $40 million, 40.6 million, to fund that $214 million budget. The reserves are primarily going towards capital, obviously that's our budget policy. The next slide shows the breakdown between all funds of how that budget divides up. John Adams is gonna talk some more about the general fund, the portions that I'm gonna talk about are all the other funds, and the general fund's about 40%, the other funds are about 32%. Most of the enterprise funds you see are... Most of, most of the enterprise funds you see at the bottom of that graph, on the top is all capital projects funds. And the next slide shows what's happened in the 2008-9 budget. We have $196,000, $196 million in budget appropriations between operating and capital, and we're using reserves of 19.3 million. Okay, we're going to move on to highlights of some of the funds. The water fund is, you may have noticed on page two of the operating budget, shows a deficit at the end of the two-year period, and this is because there is a pending rate increase that we're expecting to adopt in the summer of this year, and the capital budget needs to be moved around a little bit, which you'll see when we bring that back to you on June 12th. So there's some more additional work that needs to be done, it highlights that structural deficit that needs to be addressed. In the wastewater fund, we're showing an operating fund deficit as well, a pending increase has to happen there as well. And we've also, for the first time, we're proposing a wastewater franchise fee to the gen, that will be paid to the general fund, similar that to what a wastewater already, I mean, the water fund is already paying. The amount of that transfer, actually it's not transfer, it's a franchise fee, will be around $250,000, which goes to the general fund, as I said earlier. The theaters fund has, now has no general fund subsidy shown in the operating budget. We have, with increased labor and rental rates, they were approved by council in the user fee session last month, and the Alliance for the Arts stepping up for an additional subsidy to the, to the theaters fund, they're going to be supporting another $50,000 additional over their $250,000 that they're giving us now, plus another $100,000 towards capital improvements in the Founder's Room. So that's for the next, next year, and so we're seeing that the theaters fund will probably break even. On page 260 of the budget document is the library fund. We wanted to highlight that there is an hourly employee increase to support the new children's library addition, and that the operating transfers from the general fund supports now over $4 million. And their budget overall has increased a little bit over $1 million from the previous year. And next, some highlights in some of the departments, mainly staffing highlights. The police department is adding three school resource officers and offsetting that with two DR officers that will replace, be replaced by the school resource officers, and the city is also proposing adding an Internet Predator detective. The community development department also had some reduced staffing. They reduced a planner, a building inspector, a housing rehab specialist, and an admin secretary was frozen. In community and cultural services, theaters increased designated part-time positions by three. The net cost to the city by doing that and making some positions full-time that were designated part-time previously is about $170,000. Citywide, the staffing has remained relatively flat regardless that our population has increased, and we've added a slide in here to compare the population increase to what has happened to city staffing. We thought that was kind of interesting, that we have pretty much flat staffing, considering our population has continued to rise over the last five years. And then lastly, I just wanted to share that the proposed capital budget has been incorporated into this operating budget, and wanted to share with you that you will be hearing that again on June 12th. The totals have been incorporated in the operating budget, so you can see the total impact. However, we're not really listening, we're not really hearing anything about the capital budget tonight, we're just kind of just sharing that there's an integration between the capital budget and the operating budget in the document before you. With that, I will hand it over to John.
Good evening. Tonight, I will finish the third leg of our staff presentation with an overview of the general fund. I plan briefly to touch on general fund revenues, expenditures, operating transfers, and fund balance. Just a brief summary of the general fund. Shown here are sources for 2007 and 2008. Sources total, 87 million. That's broken up into operating revenue of 70.9, transfers in of 2.4, and use of reserves for capital projects of 13.6 million. For expenditures, we have operating expenditures of 6 point, or 68 million, operating transfers out of 6 million, and capital of 12.9 million. Next, I have the 2008-2009 general fund summary. Again, operating revenues, 72.2 million, or 72.7 million, transfers in 2.5 million, and reserves for capital program, or our capital program, is 8 point, or 9 million straight. This is for a total of 84.2 million, and when we look at the uses or the expenditures, we have operating expenditures of 70.1 million, transfers out of 5.4 million, and capital of 8.6 million. This next graph is just to show you how general fund revenues and expenditures have, have been for the past three years, plus the current year, plus the two proposed years. As you can tell, expenditures in '04 were less than revenues creeping up to 2005, where they were almost identical. We had revenues, again, exceed expenditures in 2006. In 2007, the revised budget has expenditures approximately 6 million over budgeted revenue, or expenditures, but back in 2009, 2008, we bring those back to meet each other, so operating revenues match operating expenditures. Highlights for the general fund revenues. We have a couple, there are several bright spots and a few concerns. The challenges we face are with sales tax, which makes up 40% of the general fund revenue, and development-related revenues. For sales tax, the projected increases are declining. For the current fiscal year, we are estimating sales tax revenue to be 28.6 million, which is 200,000 under the revised '06-'07 budget. Our current budget's 28.8 million. For development-related revenues, with the decrease in permit activity but the added complexity of infill projects, fees and charges were increased during the recent user fee study to ensure we maintain current revenue levels. Just to mention the other revenues, for property tax, we are estimating a 5% increase, but also we are reducing the transfer tax of an equal amount. So for property tax, both the, the ad valorem and the transfer tax, it's flat. For transient occupancy tax, we have an increase of 400,000. That is based on the two new hotels that went online in January and March. We are already seeing revenues for those as we currently speak. The other major item is vehicle license fee that I highlight. Vehicle license fee, because of the triple flip and some other issues that were up at the state back in the two-year budget, the prior two-year budget cycle, we had underestimated vehicle license fee. What we are currently looking at for this year is 9.5 million, and so the, so for '07-'08, we are projecting 9.7 million, which is an increase of 1.7 over the revised budget. Next, this is just, just a brief summary for '07-'08 for the general fund. I'm only showing the one year, but it just shows you for revenues that taxes represent 64% of the general fund. The other significant, significant area is revenue from other agencies, and that is the VLF, which is 9.7 million. The first, this is our sales tax revenue trend graph. The first 11 bars presented here is the actual sales tax revenues for the city through 2006. The last three bars represent the current fiscal year revised budget and the projected sales tax revenue for the proposed budget. If you can tell, 2006, we were well over $29 million. We have budgeted 28.8 million this year, which I had mentioned earlier, we're actually expecting 28.6. And then for 2008, we're looking at 29, and with a 2.5% increase, we're looking at 29.7 in the second year. Staff also thought this graph would be helpful to show the growth of our single largest revenue source, which is the sales tax, compared to our single largest cost, which is public safety. As you can tell, public safety is increasing. I think Candace had mentioned in the second, in the second year, 4.5%. We're only projecting a 2.5% increase in sales tax, and you sort of see those lines coming closer. And so we thought was interesting and helpful. Just to finalize my discussion on revenues, I briefly talked about development-related revenue. This is just per financial statements, six years, the past, the history of billing permits, and you can see the decline since 2003. Next, I want to highlight some operating expenditures for the general fund. For salaries, the amount, the amount includes increases based on current labor contracts and includes staff reductions, fringe benefits, which Candace had mentioned earlier. The major variance from '06-'07 to '07-'08 is the pre-funding of 4.6 million in retiree health from the general fund. In operations and maintenance, the proposed budget for fiscal year '07-'08 is 42 million, but this includes police, because it's a contract service at 25.5 million. The increase from '07-'08 to '08-'09 represents an increase, well, the increase in maintenance and operations in '07-'08 to '08-'09 is 1,100,000. This is simply an increase from police, which increases to 26.6 million. And the last, last mention on general fund expenditures is capital outlay. If you look at the budget book, it actually has a zero, which means that it's completely funded from capital, fixed asset replacement. Just a quick summary of '06-'07 versus '07-'08 versus '08-'09. You can see that in benefits or fringe benefits, the substantial decrease, which I explained as the OPEB funding, and then maintenance and operations, you can see from '06-'07 to '08, '07-'08, a minor increase of 30,000, but you can see the increase of a million, a million-one in the second year, and then capital outlay is zero and zero. This is just a brief graph to show the four major categories in the operating, in the general fund operating expenditures. Maintenance operations, again, 42 million, and represents 52% of the general fund. Salaries and benefits represents 40, where transfers out represents a. Highlights general fund operating transfers. In the prior slide, the pie, pie chart showed operating transfers representing 8% of the general fund operating expenditures. For '07-'08, the amount is 6 million, and for '08-'09, the amount is 5.6. The library fund actually receives approximately 73% of that transfer out. Others that receive money, stormwater and flood control fund, this is new for the first time, it actually receives a one-time transfer out in the first year of $87,000. Childcare fund receives a transfer out to provide maintenance and support for the facility. The CROSEF fund is maintained at 100,000, and then the Public Finance Authority is 1.2, which is for debt service. Also worth noting, again, is the theaters fund is not receiving a general fund subsidy. In the prior year, it was budgeted at $742,000, and the transportation transfer is from the air quality fund instead of the general fund. Quickly, on general fund, fund balance, the city maintains reserves for several things, including capital projects, emergencies, encumbrances, contingencies, endowments, and compensated absences. Budget, the budget policy is to use undesignated or unappropriated fund balance to fund one-time uses, usually for capital projects. With the approval of the proposed operating and capital budgets for '07 through '09, undesignated fund balance is estimated to end at $383,000. Briefly, I just provided what are the designations in the general fund. These were also included in the budget message and show a total designation of general fund fund balance at 31.5 million. This is after the adoption of the budget. This is an interesting graph. This graph represents the 10-year trend on general fund fund balance. As you can tell, capital projects for fiscal year '07-'09 will significantly reduce the general fund fund balance. You can see in 2006, we peaked at a little over 76 million, and then over the la, over the next three years, or including this year, we've had some significant capital programs. And in summary, tonight's recommendation is to receive city council's input on the proposed '07-'08 and '08-'09 city and redevelopment agency operating budget, and to schedule a public hearing for June 12th, 2007. Staff from all the departments, including finance, are here to answer any questions for council.
Okay, thanks very much. Outstanding presentation. You guys, it just gets every year, or two years we do the budget, it just gets better and better with respect to how you lay it out for the council and make it very user-friendly. Okay, questions for staff? Ms. Irwin?
I'd like to echo that. That was outstanding presentation by the three of you, and also an incredible effort to, to get the budget balanced, and we certainly appreciate all three of you and your entire department. I had a couple of questions on the, or just clarifications on the slides. On page 29, it, other revenues, property tax, and you said it increased 5%, and then I didn't catch what you said after that.
If you, I mean, if you want to look at the, I can do two things. I can show you the general fund summary that shows property tax increasing at 5%, and there is a second component of property tax, which is property tax transfer tax. And so I increased, we increased 5% for property tax in our estimates, but unfortunately, we have seen the slowdown in home sales, which affects transfer tax. And so what we have seen this year is about 300,000 under our estimated budget, and we're anticipating that to maintain at one point, I think 1.1 or 1 million. So I, the increase in sales tax at the top is offset by the decrease in the transfer tax. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you for that. And then on, I guess, when you talk about the sales tax revenue trend, 2009, are you expecting that bar to include the mall being fully functioning? Is that that 29.7 number?
We did include a small portion, because it's supposed to come online, I think in the middle of that fiscal year. So there is, in our sales tax projections, 1.5% is what we're projecting for the first year, and 2.5%. So we are anticipating some recovery from the mall.
But most of it will show up in the, the full year will be 2010, so hopefully we'll get a jump in that again.
Yes, '09, '10, yeah. And there's, yes.
And then on page 34, could you, it says 4.6 in OPEB pre-funding, and you went by that kind of fast, so could you explain that?
That's the retiree health prepayment. We throw around the $6 million figure, because that's across the board on all funds, and the way it was allocated was $6 million, and then based on cover payroll, how much is in the wastewater, how much is in the water fund, and there's various other funds that funded that 6 million. The general funds portion was only 4.6.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I wasn't, I thought it was 6 million, that was my question on that. And then I do appreciate all the time you spent with me this afternoon going through my questions, and I had, we had that one question that I still wanted answered on page 203 of the budget. If you could just explain, under public works, the wastewater fund, the, what the bond tax proceeds mean, why that number was decreasing?
First, for us, it's, well, it's an error. We just misclassified interest income on some reserves held with the trustee, and then some interest apportionment that we received that's outside of that. So that line on page 203, which is called bond tax proceeds, some of it will be moved up to interest income that is unrestricted and can be used for operations. The remaining amount that is restricted will be shown on the second page, which is on 204, and that will be shown separate.
And thank you for clarifying that. And what is the, what is the reason for the big decrease in that 2006, 2007? And then that jumped up again.
From the number from the 35,000. 127, again, going back two years when we did the '07, the '05-'07 budget, that number was minimal and was probably budgeted at 35,000, because we weren't anticipating bond proceeds. Yeah. Yeah, bond proceeds and then the interest earnings rate has increased. So, I think we brought it up to 140 to properly reflect the '05, '06 actuals. I don't know if that helped. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Bill Lippin?
Thank you. Thank you to the three of you and your supporting staff for giving us a very detailed presentation. I do appreciate it. It was quite clear. I do, however, have a couple of questions regarding a couple of items. The first one deals with the childcare center. Could you please explain the transfer out of 142,000?
The childcare center is supported by the city in addition to the childcare operator providing some of the expenses of operation. We provide all of the maintenance of the facility and some of the janitorial as well. So, most of the transfer then is for the maintenance of the facility and for the janitorial for work training programs. And we had approached the operator to maybe take on some of the work training programs cost, and she declined. So, that's why the number is about 140,000.
So, in other words, we are continuing to fully fund it then?
Correct. We're not making any changes at this time, and we'll be going out for an RFP this summer. So, things may change after this two-year budget's over.
Okay. Oh, in two years then, not necessarily immediately.
We'll be doing that, the RFP this summer. The contract with the operators up in June of 2009, which is at the end of this two-year budget cycle.
Question I have is with the childcare center being that it sits on publicly-owned land, and as you said, we are subsidizing it. Any idea as to the reason why the rates over there are pretty much the same compared to the other private facilities in town?
She has two groups of people that she provides services for, full rate-paying services, and then she has the grant that's, the state grant, that's about 450,000 a year that the city receives, and we turn around and contract, I mean, actually, the contract is with the state on that grant. So, we are reimbursing her. So, she has two different classes of people, and the full pay people help pay for the entire program. So, that's why there's two different rates and why some people are paying the full rate and some are getting the subsidized rate because they have the state grant. It depends on your income and how you qualify.
Thank you. The other question deals with the officers, the, or what page was it? I think it was number 19. The two officers for the schools. On page 10, actually, slide number 19, school resource officers. This is something we had discussed, I believe, in the last council meeting. What have we heard from the school district regarding that?
I can, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I can address that. We, at this point, as council recall, there's been a number of memos and communication with council. The superintendent and myself, or I was charged by the council to work through the whole DARE issue, and we're gearing up for an annual governmental relations committee meeting. We're having difficulty scheduling that meeting, but we, that'll come before the committee. But the superintendent and myself, as well as the park district general manager, have reached an understanding that all three of us will recommend altering how the youth outreach program is funded. Right now, the city is contributing 75,000 a year, and the park district is doing 75,000. Our recommendation to the committee and all elected bodies will be to have that shift. So, it's the school district and the park district paying that. That'll free us up with 75,000. And then the city, the recommendation from staff is for the city to pay the full cost of the third school resource officer, which was 200,000 a year. So, the net, if you take out the 75, the net increase to us is 125,000. So, that is the recommendation that staff is putting forward to the internal government relations committee. And again, you know, the scheduling difficulties, we just haven't been able to get that meeting scheduled. But it's anticipated that that, those recommendations, well, we're hopeful they'll be implemented so we can get the DARE conversion to the SRO program in place at the beginning of the school year next year.
Thank you.
That's it?
All right. Dr. Clancy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Hong, a few months ago, I think it was during our goal-setting session, you showed a graph indicating the income in the city versus the expenditures, and at some point down the road, about several years, those two items intersected, implying that our expenditures were going to exceed our income. When you figured out the numbers for the expenditures, did you put into the equation that we don't have as much development dollars contributing toward the capital improvement projects? And if you did, about how far down the road do those intersect, and what are your recommendations at this point so we don't get out of balance?
Okay, I'll make sure I understand your question. The schedule we showed, actually, we have it up on the screen if TV wants to show it, but that's our operating expenditures. It doesn't include the capital. So, that's a good question because as we outlined in this budget, we are seeing almost all of our capital being handled by our reserves now, and they're projecting, at least for the next two years going forward, we don't see a lot of that increase in the reserves. So, it does make, beg the question, in two years, if this continues where our revenues come in, as we expect, that we don't have additional reserves to fund new projects going forward. So, at that point, if it really continues to go that way, and the Oaks Mall and all the other projects that we see happening that are projected to come online, and that doesn't happen, then I think the city does need to be looking at other revenue sources if we have some major capital projects we need to fund. And I don't know if I want to get into that debate now, but that's certainly what we would have to look forward to.
Thank you very much. You answered it quite well. And again, congratulations on a great report, all of you.
Mr. Gillett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Candace, I had one question, slide 17, page 9, on the library. Thank you. During design and development, there was considerable discussion about the configuration with the new entranceway to the children's section and what that would equate to in additional staff charges and whatever. And I know we went back and forth trying to, trying to look at all the alternatives to avoid to the extent possible additional staffing. Is this increase between '07, '08 and '08, '09, is this anticipated to be the final major jump to adjust for staffing as a result of that new facility coming online? Is there no relationship between this? This is related to something else?
I think it should be flat, and maybe we want to have the library director answer that.
I'd love to talk to him about it. I'm interested to hear his commitment that this is absolutely the last major increase of staffing that we'll ever hear from the library side.
And his evaluation is pending on this answer.
Well, we need to talk about our next two upcoming branches.
Good evening, Mr. Bragan.
No, that, yes, the staffing increases that you see right now are really all that we will need to sufficiently staff that second desk. Staff has worked very, very hard to make that work. We're a seven-day operation. We have two shifts a day, five days a week, and it's taken considerable talent on the part of our circulation supervisor to make this happen. But that's the long answer. The short answer is yes, that's all we're going to need for the near future.
Okay, I hope so. I truly, truly hope so. As you move forward with the concept of Pacific Broadcast, the Pacific Broadcast Museum, my assumption is that you'll be looking to see if there's some sort of relationship, coordinated relationship in the, if that all moves forward, that the main library itself may get some form of relief out of adding this additional resource to the community. Kind of keep that in the back of your mind as this planning goes forward because we know the most expensive thing we get into is always personnel slots to handle all of these things, and they add up quite quickly. So, I would just, I would urge you to, in any discussions you have or continue to have with bringing that project forward, that personnel relief, hourly relief, and co-utilization be examined and utilized to any extent possible.
Absolutely. The foundation, as you know, is committed. Once that building comes online, staff, staffing will not be provided at a level higher than the endowment will allow. And there will be an opportunity to move the current special collections reading room that's now in the main library into that, into that facility as well. So, I think we can coordinate the two very, very, very well.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Just a couple. Candace, I want to pick up on what Dr. Clancy was, I think, mentioning with respect to page 14, and that's the general fund reserves and expenditures by fiscal year. As kind of an offshoot of this, some time ago, when you presented the financial strategic plan, how is that tied to this year's budget? Or is it?
What we've done is we've taken that model that was given to us two years ago, that the council, well, we brought it to you two years ago, and we took that model and we updated it with new assumptions. Because what was done, it was done in about 2004, 2003 with that old of a data. So, at that time, we hadn't even seen increases in the police costs yet. We hadn't seen the PERS increases yet. We were seeing a positive amount for a sales tax. So, all of those assumptions that are in there have to be revisited, and that's what Brent's role is. And he sat down, and that's how we've come to these, the graph that we shared with you tonight, was we took all those assumptions and revisited them all, and then that is also projected into our budget that you have before you tonight.
Okay. And then, moving forward, you're going to have to kind of refresh our memory. On that strategic plan, it just kind of had, it was forecast kind of laid out, I believe it was 10 years. Okay, did it, in the document, did it provide council direction on things it needed to do? Because I don't recall that piece being in the plan.
No, it talked about revenue sources and potential revenue that you could be looking at, but it never directed what you should do. And, you know, I think it did show out that we're, show that we're near growth and we're in a maintenance mode, and so it was, it did bring out some of those concerns, but it didn't come up with any solutions.
All right. You know, as a, not so much related to this budget, but reminded of the economic forecast that we all attended some months ago, the financial strategic plan, the graph does tell the story. It seems to me that, and I hate to use the term study session, but moving forward, it may be beneficial for the council to schedule a number of study sessions. It certainly isn't something we can do in one sitting, but to take that work that the staff has done, that financial strategic plan, and then overlay that and maybe invite people in from the community, from the business and different sectors, housing, and some of those things, to put together the other component to that financial strategic plan, and that is what the city needs to do in order to keep pace and stay in front of this. I mean, as I was talking to the city manager, I actually asked the question, 35 million, I believe, from our reserve fund for capital projects? I haven't, I don't know that we've done that in the past exactly. Okay, and so that's something we need to be paying attention to. You can't keep doing that, and we'll always need to be doing some of the capital projects down the road. So, the other thing I wanted to ask is, I believe that this, the financial strategic plan provided for short-term staffing issues with both police and library. Didn't that, isn't that correct?
It provided for the library, and we knew that addition was coming, but we had no idea that we were going to have a need for police increases or that the contract was going to go up.
Okay. So, that's something we need to look at as well. And again, just again, for clarification, the two new positions, actually, three positions, we're adding the school resource officers and the detective predator. Do we have, is Chief Carpenter here? Randy? You know what, Randy? Could you give us just a little blurb on particularly the predator, internet predator position, or what that's going to do? And you know what, it might be helpful to just give us a, just a brief summary of all the additional positions we're adding, the school resource officers and the internet predator.
Well, the school resource officers, taking the two DARE officers and then adding the one, to have a school resource officer at each high school. With that, additional programs for each school. Number one, school safety, as I've discussed before. Number two, the substance abuse issues among all the schools and juveniles in our community. With that, that's coupled with crime prevention. We would have our crime prevention give a talk, sort of a welcome-to-high-school talk to our eighth graders, talking about the pitfalls of going to the school, into high school. Again, part of this with the school resource officers is education and enforcement with MySpace. Going back to the substance abuse, we had a 15-year-old in this county die from an overdose of alcohol and over-the-counter prescription drugs. That education, besides methamphetamine use, marijuana use, and other alcohol. So, there's other programs involved, and then on top of all of that, a program with our athletes, steroid use. The leaders of the campus typically, we saw the young people tonight, are athletes, both young men and women, and target that community with contracts involving behavior, school behavior and off-campus behavior. So, it's a wide range in a nutshell of what we want to do. It's a very large program, and also involves other parts of the police department, namely, crime prevention. With the internet predator detective, as we've discussed in the past, technology has changed our society, oftentimes for the better, but with the criminal element for the worse. We all watch Dateline. We've seen the predators on that show where we have a detective dedicated to that, and we do that type of operation in Thousand Oaks. We've done it before, but we need to have a full-time resource dedicated to those predators using the internet, really attacking our children. It goes back to keeping our children safe in this community, both at the high school level, middle school level, and elementary school level.
Okay. Cap, is there other cities in Ventura County that have school resource officers?
Most do. Most throughout the state have gone from, made the transition from DARE to the school resource officers. Ventura PD did, and they lost their school resource officer through funding. Several years ago, the city of Oxnard went away from DARE and put school resource officers on. Other contract cities with the sheriff's department, they have SROs, Camarillo, Rio Mesa High, Fillmore High School. Most high schools in this day and age across the country have a school resource officer on campus, not only because of the violence that occurs on campuses, but the other things I talked about earlier.
And my assumption is the sheriff's department has had an opportunity to kind analyze these positions. They're relatively new, I would imagine, generally speaking, five years in terms of its benefit in contrast to maybe some other programs?
We looked at other programs, and we looked at some of the best programs in the state for the school resource officers. And recently, I sent a sergeant and a senior deputy down to the city of Long Beach to visit with Long Beach Police Department. They have a very extensive school resource officer, and we want to see how they are approaching the same problems that we face in their community. So, we looked at, we looked at them, we looked at Los Angeles, we looked at within our county to see how other police departments and school districts are approaching the problems on campus.
As far as funding goes, I don't know if you know, maybe the city manager might know, but how is, is it in other communities, is the funding shared between the school district and the municipal city government? Is it paid for all by the city police forces? How does the funding work?
In general, there's a shared cost.
Okay. 50/50, or how's that work?
You see, my experience has been between the school district and the city, to have a partnership, 50/50, sometimes a 70/30. There's not an exact equation, Mr. Mayor, but you do see a shared, a shared cost.
Okay. And Mr. Middening, I know this was touched on, but in this budget, the city's basically absorbing the absorbing the cost of these officers?
That's correct. For the three SRO, the three school resource officer positions, the city will pay 100%. However, the city will not have to pay the $75,000 a year for the youth outreach program. The school district will pick up that. And if I may add for council's information, we have done a comprehensive survey of all the cities in the county with respect to how they fund the SRO program in their cities. And I don't know if it's the vast majority, but several of them do have a split funding where it's close to fifty-fifty, or there's a certain dollar amount. I have that information. We can provide that to the full council if you like. In fact, we will do that.
Okay. All right. That's all the questions I have. This is a study session, so no actions required by the council. Just again, Mr. Gillette?
Thank you. I had a question for Captain Panos. Randy, several years ago, each year at student orientation at Cal Lutheran, especially freshman orientation, sheriff's department sent a juvenile investigator in and put on a presentation on duties and responsibilities of the 17, 18, 19-year-old college freshman, first time away from home. Is that program continuing, or has that been, do we still do that?
We do not do that, but it's something we certainly could do.
Okay. My sense was we weren't doing it anymore. And in view of a number of the things that have happened in the last couple of years with part of the population, especially the younger population at Cal Lutheran, with twenty, or 2,000 some-odd students and residents out there on that campus. And for a number of young people who come here for the first time from all over the United States, all over the world, I think they had thirty-some students from thirty-some foreign countries this year, in a very vulnerable age and a new sense of freedom to counterbalance some of the enthusiasm and some of the excitement that we truly have a responsibility to, give them some orientation of rules, responsibility, and conduct, you know, areas of drug abuse, alcohol abuse, date rape, vehicle theft, the major things that they're so potentially vulnerable to. So I would like to see us expand this area of youth orientation in academic settings to the university campus.
Very similar to what I talked about with the eighth-grade class going into high school. This is just an older version of that.
Okay. I'm sure Bill Ross, or the dean of students, would welcome something like that.
We could do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? Ms. Building LaPena?
If I may touch briefly upon this particular issue, once again, the funding of officers. You mentioned that another city in Ventura County actually didn't have enough funding and therefore eliminated the position of a school resource officer?
It's my understanding the city of Ventura, a few years ago, did not have the funding, and they no longer have that position.
And was that decision perhaps due to, and I'm asking this since I don't know, because of the effectiveness or ineffectiveness? I mean, it's, of course, if you don't have the money, that's one thing, but something as seemingly important as having a school resources officer, certainly you would want to try and find a source, a resource to fund that position was, I'm just trying to find out what could have been more important than a position such as that.
Well, I couldn't speak for the financial difficulties in the city of Ventura, but I can tell you that it was a valued program among the community, among the school district, and with the city police department.
Do you, go ahead, Mr. Middening.
I could add to that from a public policy standpoint. And council's mail, coincidentally, there's a copy of Ventura County, or excuse me, City Ventura, city manager Rick Cole did an op-ed piece from about a week ago, and talked about police funding and so on. And I think he makes reference to the SRO program. He does, very good. And I've also talked to Rick about this, and it had nothing to do with the effectiveness of the program. They liked it. Ventura is in a lot different financial shape than the city of Thousand Oaks, and it's facing some severe financial challenges to just balance its general fund budget. They haven't added anything to the police department in many years. And they did go to the voters for, to increase the sales tax to help deal with that situation. The voters did not approve that. So they're having to make some internal choices within that community. So it was clearly a budget situation. They'd love to put the program back in place if they could.
Thank you. The other comment is, and also again, on perhaps reducing our expenditures, now that we're looking at reduced or decreased sales tax and other sources. Staff looked at Plan B and see where we could save money in order to make up for some of the decreases we will undoubtedly face, such as reducing the workforce through attrition now that we're in maintenance mode.
Our goal this go-around was to make sure that we had a good estimate on our revenues, and we actually had to ask the departments to step up and cut back to be able to make this a balanced budget that we're presenting to you tonight. So they have gone back and looked at their M&amp;O budgets, their maintenance and operations budgets, and there was a significant amount of cutting that departments did there. And in addition, we did reduce vacant positions in some departments that I mentioned to you earlier. So we did take those steps. And then we still have to weigh it with the positions and the programs that we want to continue to have. We don't, didn't feel we had to cut any programs right now, but that's certainly the council's discretion to do that if you feel it's necessary.
Well, it may eventually be necessary, but I do recall the Budget Task Force, which I believe we can recall to look at our budget again, if they are on ad hoc basis, that one of the recommendations was to actually elevate the position of the auditor in order to have perhaps more audits, and that may help in reducing some of the expenditures and some of the costs. Has that been looked at? It's one of the recommendations that has not been implemented by the Budget Task Force.
I'll be glad to comment on that. Now, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, to be perfectly clear about this, the budget before you is Plan B. We could not, we did not balance the budget first time through. So we had to go back and go through a series of cost-cutting exercises, including not funding several positions that are frozen and that are vacant. We also concluded three years of challenging negotiations with the Alliance for the Arts to reduce the general fund subsidy of the theaters fund, which was pushing three-quarters of a million dollars. So we were successful there, and a lot of other internal cost-cutting in terms of travel and training and things of that nature. And at the same time, we found to do that, we did come up with funding for the two additional police positions, which push over $400,000 a year. And we dealt with declining revenues in the general fund and the sales tax side that's been clearly articulated here tonight. The former Community Budget Task Force's recommendations, all 49 of them have been actually implemented. There were some of those that were not implemented, and we have communicated with councils as to reasons why, one of which was for the establishment of the auditor position. We feel it's simply not necessary. We're the only city in the county that has an auditor. He's here, an internal auditor, and he has a full plate on doing the revenue audits. But to go into performance audits with a full-time internal auditor, we just feel it's not cost-effective at this time. It's certainly something we can look at, and perhaps we can cut a position or two elsewhere to ultimately do that. But for a city of our size, it's just not cost-effective. It'd be more effective to use external auditors from time to time to look at our services. So we are implementing or recommending a Plan B budget to council this time.
Any other comments? My only comment, or for lack of better description, direction to staff, and I'll put it on the table, I am concerned about the partnership in terms of sharing costs with the school district on the SRO officers. I think we need to take a very good, hard look at that. I understand there'll be some committee meetings. I know the council is aware, and the community is aware, that we've enjoyed over the years a very good relationship with both the park district and the school district. And this city, I think, is really unparalleled in the amount of money that we have contributed, both directly and indirectly to both agencies, in the several millions of dollars. We just recently did, you know, most people recognize the city's participation with the makeover of the football stadiums and the football fields and several, three-plus-million dollars there. I'm concerned about the ongoing balance between city dollars and school district dollars. These are going to be ongoing dollars, three positions, well over $600,000, plus startup costs, radios, cars, all that stuff. I recognize there was some give-back in terms of $75,000, but I'm concerned that we're approaching kind of an out-of-balance relationship, that I don't think long-term will be healthy for either organization or either district or council. And so I would just encourage the committee and the city manager to work very hard. We're going to fund them because it's the right thing to do, but I also think the city needs to look at the dollars that we spend, ongoing dollars with the school district, and look at possibly, from the city's perspective, reprogramming some of that money in areas that we think are important. And I think we need to take a real good look at that, and I know the committee's going to do that. Because I don't think we want to be, and I think it had been pointed out by Captain Pentis, once you provide these type of services, it becomes very problematic to take them away. Very problematic. And they're, while it's a community benefit, the immediate beneficiary certainly is the school, the school district, and the students. And I say that, and at the same time, I'm a big believer in we all serve the same constituency. That's why the city puts in those funds, because there are kids, there are families, and it's the right thing to do. But I just think we need to, from an operating standpoint, we need to take a real good, hard look at that and see if we can improve on that balance. The other thing is, unless there's objection from the council, I'd like to ask the city manager to bring back a recommendation for these study sessions that we discussed. And I'd also like, included in that, a suggestion and recommendations of bringing in outside experts to work with the council, to partner with the council on the second element of this financial strategic plan for where we may want to go and things the city may need to do over the next decade or more. As we all recognize, our revenues and our expenditures, they've pretty much come at a collision point. We are going to get a little bit better next year with the Oak Mall and some of the other sales tax, but there's always going to be these needs. We are at build-out. I think all of us now are saying the same thing. That's a good thing, we're being honest with the community. In terms of development, dollars are few and far between, and so we really do need to transition into this maintenance. Staff's done a good job, but I think council needs to provide some long-term direction on that. So unless there's objections, those would be my two items that I would refer to staff in conjunction with the budget. If there's no other comments, again, Candace, I want to thank you and your staff and all the department heads who are here. This was a difficult budget, and you were asked to do some things and work very, very hard at streamlining and maximizing our efficiency. And so on behalf of the council, we want to thank the individual department heads, Linda, Assistant City Manager, and Scott and his staff for preparing really a very measured and responsive budget in a difficult time. But it does put us in a good position of moving forward, and that's the whole key. So unless there's any other comments, that will be the, it's just a receive and file, no action is required, and we can move on to our next agenda item. Thanks. You know what? We do need, Candace, do you need us to, recommendation to call the public hearing for June 12? Okay, so I need a motion, it's in the agenda, to agendize a public hearing for June 12 to hear and approve the '08, '09, '07, '08 operating budget. Dr. Clancy?
Mr. Mayor, I assume we've scheduled a public hearing for June 12, 2007.
All right. Discussion? Vote?
Motion carries 5-0.
All right, that is approved. Move to item nine, it's public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you call item 9A for a public hearing, please?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider. Agenda item 9A, Municipal Code Amendment, MCA 2007-70052, change processing requirements to allow administrative processing rather than planning commission review for certain alterations, additions to individual townhome and condominium units. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the council regarding this public hearing, and I have no speaker cards.
Mr. Currents?
Good evening. Mayor Fox and members of council. As mentioned before this evening, is MCA 2007-70052, proposing to change the current code standards to allow for administrative processing for certain modifications to individual townhome and condominium units. The purpose of this amendment is to provide consistent application processing requirements for all individual residents in the city, as well as to simplify the application process for individual townhome, condominium units by providing an administrative process for certain improvements that currently require planning commission consideration. Since this amendment is solely a change of procedure, it does not qualify as a project and is therefore exempt from CEQA requirements. The current code section in place now was adopted in 1998 and established a major modification process for certain improvements, including any floor area expansion or balcony expansion, enclosing an existing balcony, or increasing the height of a dwelling. The general topic of reviewing the application process for additions to townhome and condominiums was requested for study by the Residents' Roundtable at the city council's meeting July 18, 2006, at which time council authorized them to discuss the item. After several meetings devoted to discussing the topic, the Residents' Roundtable concluded at its February 5, 2007 meeting, that the review process could be simplified, and voted to recommend to council the initiation of an amendment. And on February 20, 2007, the city council initiated this amendment and referred the item back to the planning commission. On April 23, 2007, the planning commission considered this amendment and agrees that the changes would benefit all homeowners in the city, and they subsequently voted to recommend that council approve the amendment. The proposed amendment would utilize the precise plan design application and its process for alterations to individual townhome and condominium units that meet all applicable development standards. This amendment would also incorporate an advisory statement that encourages homeowners to obtain any necessary approval from their homeowner association prior to submitting an application to the city. Now, although this amendment will provide an administrative process, planning commission review was still required for two-story additions in exclusively single-story neighborhoods, any request for second-floor additions that exceed 50% of the original building footprint, projects that involve a deviation from any applicable development standard, and for a policy-related or precedent-setting item. This amendment does not change all processing standards for townhomes and condominium units. For alterations to multiple units or to common areas, the minor and major modification process will remain applicable. Also, it is important to note that this amendment is not changing any of the city's design review standards that are currently in place. There are several benefits resulting from this amendment. First, the amendment will reduce the application filing fees for owners of townhome and condominium units who wish to make improvements to their home. It will provide for quicker processing of homeowner requests. The processing times for administratively-processed applications are typically faster than those requiring planning commission review. It will provide for consistent use of the PPD process for individual townhome, condominium, and single-family units. And with the addition of an advisory statement, homeowner associations will potentially be more aware of projects occurring in their project areas. Therefore, staff recommends that the city council approve the proposed amendment and introduce the attached ordinance. Findings to support this recommendation are contained in the ordinance. And this concludes staff's presentation, and staff is available for questions. And this concludes staff's presentation, and staff is available for questions.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Kerns. We have no speaker cards on this item. Questions for staff? Mr. Gillette?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On your slide 8, page 4. The planning commission review will be required for two-story additions in exclusive one-story projects. The concern I have is that protracted discussion we've had about two-story additions, period, and viewshed protection, and all of the related things to that, the only way we get, seem to get, that kind of review to protect privacy and viewshed is to review, is to have the commission review all two-story additions. Is there, am I reading something where this is, this does not include all and only refers to one, two-story additions in one-story, one-story project areas?
Well, if it were a two-story addition in exclusively single-story project area, the code currently requires that type of addition to go in front of the planning commission. Currently, if it was a single-family home and it was a two-story addition, it does not necessarily trigger planning commission review, only if it exceeds the 50% threshold requirement of the existing building footprint. What we were proposing to do is pull the townhomes and condominiums under the same precise plan of design umbrella that the single-family homes are required to go through and utilize that process for the townhomes. These, as you mentioned, there's no viewshed protection ordinance, but if there is a process in place, the PPD would be applicable. If there was someone that had a concern with the proposal, they do have the right to oppose that project, go through the administrative hearing process, and subsequently to the Planning Commission or City Council on appeal.
Okay, so it's your feeling, after going through all of this and preparing this, that the necessary protections for viewshed protection and privacy are addressed with these, with this change? Or it complements what we already have, and it doesn't weaken it? Is that, do I understand you correctly?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Okay, how about a motion? Dr. Clancy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make just a quick comment concerning Mr. Gillette's concern. In the time that I served on the Planning Commission, that we were reviewing all of these house mods, I don't think we allowed anything to slip through that came through, whether it was handled administratively or certainly not that came to planning commission. So I feel very confident that we're not weakening the system at all. All we're doing is facilitating the processing, which it really needs. So we put it out to the Roundtable, to the Planning Commission, to the public, and now back to us. I think we've really looked at this very well. I'd like to move staff recommendation that we introduce the attached ordinance approving MCA 2007-70052, read in title only and waive further reading.
Okay, Dr. Clancy moves the staff recommendation. Discussion on the motion? Any none? Vote, please.
The ordinance title is Amending Municipal Code Title 9, Chapter 4, Sections 9-4.904H, 9-4.1801, 9-4.1802, 1803, and 1808, to modify processing standards for additions and alterations to existing townhome and condominium units. And that vote passed 5-0.
All right, that is approved. Move to item 10, that's Department Reports. Item 10A is Citizen Response Management System, CRMS, contract award, and Ms. Ross will be Ms. Ross, good evening. Need to turn your mic on.
All right, now?
There you go.
All righty. Good evening. I'm here to discuss the item 10A on your agenda tonight. I hope you've had a chance to review it. However, first, let me just introduce John Augustine, as you've met before, I'm sure, our information technology manager. He's going to be here to help answer any technology questions you may have. And then also, our new PIO officer, Public Information Officer, Drew Powers, is here. It's great to have him. He has experience in implementing what we call a Customer Response Management System. The acronym is CRIMs, and I'll refer to it as that from time to time. To give just a little overview of the staff report that you've had a chance to see, let me explain that some history. In 1991, in the city manager's office, staff determined the need for a way to monitor the many requests that came to the city via letters, emails, phone calls, even citizens coming up to the counter and having their citizen concerns that they needed responses to. We were fortunate to have an in-house programmer at that time who created a referral system for us that was AS400-based with a computer that we do have that services all of our other modules. They created a software package that we called the Referral System. In that referral system, we were able to input the actual request, track them, update them as to what progress had been made, and eventually close them when the request had been answered. The system provided a quick reference to the status of requests, the history of action taken, and timing for completion. However, the automation factor was limited, and keeping the system up to date was quite labor-intensive. That responsibility fell mainly to me, the system administrator, and we do have quite a bit of hard copy, file paperwork that the system was not able to incorporate, so it did create quite a few files. Around the year 2000, a number of software system corporations developed what is called the Customer Response Management System, which greatly automated the process. As a web-based system, citizens and council members will be able to enter their questions and their request for action from their email addresses at home by logging into the CRIM system, which will be accessible through the city's website. In order to better serve our citizens and you, it was time to investigate the city purchasing a more automated, easily accessible, and user-friendly Customer Response Management System. Since February 2007, a selection team made up of seven city staff members representing the city manager's office, information technology division, the public works department, and the code enforcement division of the community development department, developed a request for proposals, a document which was mailed to 45 software vendors. We received nine responses from that mailing, and after going through the demonstrations, well, actually, each of us individually reviewed all nine of those responses, and then decided that there were ten, that, excuse me, that there were four that definitely met the criteria that we were looking for, and we had them out for demonstrations, and then analyzed just how they compared. COMCATE was selected based on its user-friendly operations, its proven track record in over 60 installations statewide, including the city of Ventura, and strong project management implementation and training program. Tonight, we are asking council to approve the agreement that was faxed to you earlier today and is in your supplemental packet with COMCATE for a Customer Response Management System, not to exceed $36,000 to replace the city's current AS400-based referral system. If you have any questions, we're here to answer those.
Okay. Thanks, Ms. Ross, for your nice report. Questions? We have no, we do have one, no, no cards on this item, some questions. Ms. Irwin.
Actually, I don't have a question. I just have a comment. I really appreciate the effort you and your committee made in coming to this recommendation, that AS400 system is, you're saying outdated, it's completely archaic, the only system that still has a green screen, and I really tried to follow all my referrals, all the issues that I had from residents, and I just couldn't figure it out. And I actually have a degree in engineering, so it was too difficult for me. So I'm very excited that you're doing this. I know I asked you some questions earlier, and I think this will definitely meet our needs. It'll be very helpful to be able to look back and see what happened to the referrals that we had. The other thing, I think you mentioned, the, or mentioned to me that the documentation is going to be attached to the referral also online, so you're not going to be having to store all that information.
That's correct. Do you want to address that at all, Drew?
Sure, council member. The, just speaking from experience and working with this particular system in the city of Ventura, we used it for all forms of communication with the city, so whether it's a letter or a phone call, all documentation associated with that is attached to the system and accessible by city staff and council members.
And we'll be able to look up by our name all the referrals that we've put in?
That's correct. You'll be able to look up by name or by topic, any referrals are created through their reporting capabilities.
And how long will it take for this to become, to be implemented?
We're looking at three to six months. We'll be working with COMCATE. They have an excellent team of project manager who will come and help us with the implementation. We'll have to develop our codes in various categories, establish some policies, and then there will also be extensive training. So three to six months.
Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Ms. Bill de la Peña.
Thank you. Just to clarify, did you say, and I, and now after Ms. Irwin mentioned it also, that we are able to access online a referral system? Because I have never been told about this.
Oh, I'm sorry. As far as the present referral system, the AS400, when Ms. Irwin does that, she would be doing that from the city.
Oh, from the city computer, not from home?
Not from her home.
Oh, oh, I see. Okay. But with this new system, we will be able to do that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I just want to comment, while the new system is going to be great, I think our staff has done an outstanding job, actually, of council referrals and citizen referrals over many, many years. And that might have been labor-intensive, but I have, and I think I speak for the council, it's a rare occurrence that, either through email or phone call, the council receives complaints of staff not, you know, following up on a referral. Sometimes it takes a little while, and occasionally there are issues, but for the most part, the city staff has really been, really done an outstanding job. And while our system might have been archaic, there was a log number, there was a signed out, and it was all the documents, you know, like somebody's handwriting was on there, and I think the staff's done a pretty good job. And this will just make it that much better, and more open, more transparent local government, which is exactly what we're all about. I believe it's one of our goals, and this is definitely going in the right direction. And thanks, staff, John, and all your staff for all your good work. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor Fox.
Okay, we do need a, we do need a motion to deal with the recommendation to the, to 10A. Ms. Bill de la Peña?
On this side for a change. I will move to approve staff recommendation, to approve the agreement with COMCATE.
Okay, Ms. Bill de la Peña moves the staff recommendation. Discussion on this item? Vote, please.
Motion carries 5-0.
All right, that is approved.
Thank you.
Nice job. Okay, item 10B is a status report on the 23 freeway widening project and the 23 101 interchange project, landscape installations on 23 freeway sound walls and interchanges. And Mr. Watkins, I believe you're going to give us a brief update on where we're at, and I think you're bringing good news.
I hope to be bringing good news, and I also hope to be brief.
Okay.
So thank you, Mayor Fox, members of city council. It was just about one year ago that the 23 freeway widening project began, so this is kind of just an informal, brief status update one year later. The project, as you're well aware, includes the widening of the 23 freeway, adding one lane in each direction roughly from Highway 101 to New LA Avenue. Of that, about 10 lane miles, or five miles in each direction, are within the city of Thousand Oaks, and also four miles of sound walls. At this point, all of the sound walls have been constructed. There's one minor piece that's being added by change order onto one of those walls. There are seven bridges within the city that need to be widened. Olson Road, at this point, has been completed. All of the other ones are in progress. They started doing some of the grading. You've probably seen, if you drive that way, not only the grading of the rough grade, but base paving going down, and so we'll actually start to see some regular paving, concrete going in there probably by July. They've also completed all of their optical fiber communications. This is something that Caltrans does when they add lane miles, is they, they put a fiber-optic system in there that makes the freeway eligible for what they refer to as their ITS, or their Intelligent Transportation System. That's an important link that will allow the entire county to be live up on the internet with real speed times and traffic data and all that type of thing. So kind of an underappreciated, at this point, asset within Ventura County, but that's an important piece to this contract. All in all, though, the good news is that the project is about 40% complete. It was initially anticipated to go through the middle of 2009, and at this point, it should be done by the end of 2008. So at this point, the project's running about six to eight months ahead of schedule after only a year of construction. So we're very happy to hear that, and that is indeed very good news. A little bit about the follow-on project. The project that would follow this project is the 23 101 interchange. And we're getting kind of mixed reviews on that at this point, but we've been in contact with VCTC, the Ventura County Transportation Commission. They, in turn, have made their request for projects through the California Transportation Commission. This year, they put in both the 118 freeway and the 23 101 interchange. And at this point, the California Transportation Commission, the CTC, did not include either one of those projects in their 2007 funding. Kind of our fallback position is that they would have funded only the 118, and then in 2008, they would have funded the 23 101, so that that would have been followed on. So VCTC, at this point, is scrambling around, doing everything they can to make sure that the 118 is included in this year's CTC budget, and then the 23 101 would be in the next year. Our other big push right now in the 23 101 is to get the design started. We got notification from Caltrans earlier this year that the design would begin in July of this year, about a total of about 18 months' design time. And so that would work out just fine at this point with the schedule, as long as they do start the design when they said they would. And so we're working through both Caltrans and the Transportation Commission to make sure that indeed the design does start. The other follow-on projects are in regards to landscaping, and we're looking to get landscaping projects done, both on the sound walls and the interchanges. The sound walls would be projects that would be built and constructed by Caltrans. Our role in that really is to be little pests buzzing around them, letting them know how important it is to our community, and to help them identify funding and grant funding. On the interchange projects, what we've done on the 101 is the city has actually stepped up and landscaped all those interchanges. We, in turn, ended maintaining them for five years, so that the initial maintenance period is over, and then Caltrans will take them over. And that's the approach we're planning on using on the 23 freeway also. We've had very good success along the 101 freeway doing that, although we're having some difficulties with Caltrans continuing to maintain things to the same degree that we did. The most recent interchange we turned over to Caltrans was Westlake at 101. That was about a year ago, so it's been about six years since we constructed it. It's already starting to kind of degrade a little bit. Caltrans has asked us to take over the maintenance on that, and we have declined and showed them the agreement that they signed that said they would do it. So we're trying to continue to hold them to the standard and keep up those things nicely. And then just the other item, a couple of the items that have come up recently, we've had issues with graffiti on the 23. I'm sure that everyone is aware of. Caltrans has followed up on that fairly well. They've issued a blanket purchase order, a change order to the contractor so that he's authorized to remove the graffiti as soon as it shows up. And then we've also had a number of citizen contacts in regards to the sound walls, either people that got sound walls and didn't do as much as they wanted, or they didn't get sound walls and they'd like to have sound walls, or they don't live along there, but they don't like the looks of the sound walls. The sound walls were primarily, that was the most requested feature as we went through the whole design phase for the 23, through the various public meetings and things, that was kind of the most requested feature. And so we did end up with quite a few sound walls. Our hope is that through the landscaping, it'll kind of soften the walls that are there and make them kind of blend into the background just a little bit. So just a quick summary, overall, very good progress. We're very pleased with the contractor that got the job and that they've proceeded as quickly as they have. We're hopeful that it continues on that same type of pace, and that they're able to open those lanes to traffic much sooner than originally anticipated.
All right, thanks. We do have a public comment card. Kathleen Doran?
I'm one of those residents who would like to see more sound walls. Unfortunately, we've all been talking about the quality of life and how fantastic it is in Thousand Oaks. is in Thousand Oaks. For the most part, I would agree, but recently found that ours has been diminishing. 15 years ago, when we purchased here, we were told there were going to be sound walls, that they were part of the plan, and when Caltrans had the money, they would come. I believed them. I was a first-time homeowner. I believed them. About nine, 10 years ago, one wall went up on the opposite side of the freeway, which increased the sound flow into our neighborhood. I called the city, I called Caltrans, I was told when Caltrans had the money, all the walls were going to go up. Much to my chagrin, I believed it again. Now we saw all the walls going up. We were excited. Great, it's finally going to be taken care of. Then we noticed there weren't setups in our area. All the walls were going up all around it, but our area was noticeably blank. There was no prep work, nothing. All of a sudden, I went, okay, I'm done believing. I started calling again, found out that a number of my fellow residents had been calling as well, to find out that there's going to be no sound wall in that one small section. What's effectively been created is a sound funnel. Everybody knows basic acoustics. You go like this, and you can collect the sound and hear a little better, the very first hearing aid. Well, we're the recipients of that effect. As the sound walls are coming together, they're going to collect that sound and continue to funnel it and force that light off into our neighborhood. Now, what was sent to us was the letter that you got from Caltrans showing a report based upon sound volume. That faulty report is the basis for the actions that are being taken now. The measurement techniques are very misleading, were taken in an inappropriate time, and are wrong. We had residents that went out and purchased their own sound measuring equipment and found out that they are wrong. So what we've got now is a situation of residents who are upset, Caltrans wanting that because you didn't pass the sales tax, you can't have the sound wall, because they won't approve rubberized foundations, you can't have any kind of a benefit from that, oh, and by the way, there's no money. No money, I can kind of understand, except for the fact that we've protected parks where people don't live. We've protected Christmas trees where people don't live. For those of us that are still there with that one small section wide open, hearing all the sound from everybody else who's been benefiting from the walls, having it collected into our area, we're going to be suffering the blight from this. And what we're looking for is a continued partnership with the city to help us actively find those funds. Perhaps instead of making the walls pretty, we can get another wall? Perhaps instead of landscaping some of those areas, we can put that off and shelter this last small section of homes, the other half million, $600,000 homes? No, we're not the most expensive, but we're also your core residential value. We're the families, we're the homeowners, we're the middle income. I have a business here. Everybody wants to see the quality of life recover. So what we're asking for is, again, active participation in chasing down the funds, chasing down Caltrans, who is very reluctant to respond, and get this matter taken care of.
Thank you, Ms. Doran. Ms. Bill de la Peña has a question for you.
Good evening. Where exactly is it that you live?
The area between Jan's Road and going down to Spalding or Gainesboro. There was a wall that was put up on the opposite side, Page Lane to Hillcrest, and that is acting as the shield that's funneling the sound initially off onto us, and now with the added walls, it's increasing the value of the sound coming through.
And how many homes are in that area approximately?
It's the Park Oaks development. I know I do not live on Hill, I'm sorry, on White Cliff, which is the most blighted street. I actually live at the end of the block on another street that intersects it, and I can tell the sound's too high. So we're probably talking about, what would you say, Denise, maybe, yeah, about 50, 60 homes? Because as I said, mine's at the other end of the block of Dorchester, which intersects it, and I know we're impacted by it.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Roy.
I had a question for staff.
Sure.
Yeah. What is the criteria for sound walls? I was going to ask that anyway, and I didn't even know that we had a speaker.
Caltrans criteria varies, and when she mentions the park, they have different, different criteria. But I think, as I recall, the criteria for residential is 67 decibels.
Isn't there also a survey of whether the residents want it or not?
Well, one of the situations we came up with were residents that sat up above the freeway on a hillside, and in that case, they qualified for the wall. But since they sat up above the freeway, they had to agree to have the wall put up on their property line as opposed to down the freeway, because you couldn't, you couldn't physically build it tall enough without kind of being ludicrous. In that case, they had to make the decision between a sound wall and a view, because if the sound wall went in, they'd lose their view. And so they had, and they had to agree. You can't do one piece and open it one piece, or like she mentioned, it has to be a continuous wall, otherwise the sound gets through. In that case, they were roughly 60, 40, 70, 30 for the wall, but since there was enough folks that didn't want the wall, that wanted to keep their view, the Caltrans wasn't able to construct it. And so in that case, they have to. And some of the other cases, if they're able to build it up on the freeway, then it doesn't require the consensus necessarily of the neighbors, because it's not on their property line.
So what is the situation in this specific neighborhood?
This neighborhood, if, it sits back from the freeway, and I just received the same letter that she referred to, I received a letter from Caltrans today, basically a very short letter that says, we did a brief sound measurement, that with that sound measurement and the projections of what the increases would be due to traffic, they didn't qualify. And like I said, it's very brief. So we haven't had a chance to look, we haven't seen any other data to see what current measurements would be, or what, or what the residents would be, or even to look at Caltrans' original data. What we had asked Caltrans to do was to facilitate a neighborhood meeting. So let's get these folks together, let's get the Caltrans engineers together and find out what's going on. And Caltrans said, let us respond to you first, to your letter. We had written them. And so we just received that response today. But we'll be happy to follow up, follow up with the neighborhood, organize a neighborhood meeting, get Caltrans there and go through what the criteria is and what the measurements are, and find out whether they can qualify. And I would say that's what we've been doing kind of through the process, is both trying to facilitate and then advocate on our, on our residents' behalf, because it is a state project, but it's easier for us to read through the rules and try to make sure that we can get everything we can for, for the folks.
There's, I've had residents from another neighborhood also talk about the need for sound wall in their neighborhood. Is there, has Caltrans put any sound walls up after? I know they had an initial design a few years ago. Have they put up any sound walls between, that they hadn't initially planned for?
No. No, and same thing like along the 101 freeway, we're going to be asking city council to authorize a sound wall, city-funded, 101 at Wendy. I think that gets authorized, advertised for bids within the next council meeting or two. And so typically, once it's already there, Caltrans has taken the approach that development that's allowed to occur, the city is then responsible for. When they're widening, they're kind of on the hook through their environmental document.
Okay, so you will, all right, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Gillette.
That's kind of interesting, Mark, that the, Caltrans's response to that, where the city's allowed development, because every time I pull on northbound on the 101 from Hampshire Road, those residents that don't have a sound wall were there before there was a 101, even before it was an expressway, when it was a two-lane feeder road. And so the development is gone, the freeway's gone, and there those, that handful of homes sit. And I know that's one of the areas of contention, and I'm not critical of Caltrans. I know that in the, in Region 7, we are the, we are truly the tail on that dog, when you look at the projects that they're dealing with in Los Angeles County. But these are quality of life issues, direct quality of life, and it's, we're waiting and waiting and waiting, and tomorrow never seems to come. So I want to be careful how far I go on this, because this is a status report, right, Ms. City Attorney?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, it's just a matter of time. But since you offered, since you volunteered, as part of that general discussion, that you're going, your staff is going to look into this, we await, I'm sure I speak for all of us, we await a relatively timely response to this particular situation, which will probably include where are the half dozen hotspots, where you have expanded traffic, you have construction, you have expectation, but you don't have anything happening. Wendy and southbound 101, Wendy Drive is another one. Every time you go on that on-ramp and look down into those yards, you wonder how those people can possibly tolerate the noise there. So I'm happy to hear that City Public Works is going to take a look at those, compile information on them, and do what we can to encourage and prioritize, probably is the best word, and then respond to those, because they are absolute quality of life issues. And it's a, it's a terrible, terrible environment that these people have been required to, to live with for, for an extended period of time. So thank you very much for your awareness of the issue and your willingness to commit resources within your department to respond and identify the areas and then formulate recommendations to resolve these issues. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for the, Ms. Bill de la Peña?
Thank you. I have a question. Since this is a verbal report, we're not allowed to make a formal motion to request that staff come back with a recommendation?
Just a status, status update, yeah. Yeah, okay.
Thanks.
All right. Thanks for the report. I think you got the sense of where the council's going. Okay, appreciate it. Ms. Doran, thanks for coming down. Appreciate it. Okay, we're going to move to, that completes the departmental reports. Items 11, 12, and 13A, we have no reports. That brings us to 13B, which is council issues, recommendations. And we have Councilmember Bill de la Peña, 13B.
Thank you. At the last council meeting, we discussed the, our fleet and the number of alternative fuel vehicles which we have, and I understand that the city is a leader in Ventura County in having one-third of its fleet be CNG or hybrid or electrical. And given the fact that the gas prices will apparently not go down anytime soon, it was $165,000 hit that our budget had to take in fuel cost increases. As a result of that, I would like to recommend that we increase our fleet from 30% to 50% of alternative-fueled vehicles. That could include CNG, that could include electric, and of course hybrids. And one goal would be to accomplish it within five years. I would like to hear from staff as to how realistic that is. I figured if, if New York can convert 13,000 taxi cabs in just a matter of months, well, not quite months, but in a short period of time, perhaps we could accomplish something similar. Although, I'm not comparing the city of Thousand Oaks to New York, but what I'm saying is that it is an attainable goal. So that is a question that I have for staff, actually. And then, of course, we can also invite other comments.
Thank you. The, as you, as you point out, a large, a number of our vehicles are alternatively fueled already, whether they be CNG or hybrids. And the last round of replacements for our fleet were, in fact, either CNGs or hybrid vehicles, including some of our service trucks. A lot of the purchases that we've been able to do have been through grants, and we will be continuing to diligently pursue grant funding so that we can, we can include more purchases as, as we rotate vehicles through our regular replacement program. Five years to get to 50%, I think that's attainable. I mean, we will, we'll do what we can to do that, sure.
Thank you.
Okay. That's all our council issues. We'll move to item 14, City Manager Report. Mr. Minnick?
Well, will it not require a motion? Yeah, we need to have a motion on that. Well, I would move that the approval, the recommendation to have, to increase the fleet by 50% within five years.
Well, it says prepare a plan to increase. So we're not given that specific direction. We're directing them to prepare a plan to bring back. That's what, that's what the agenda says. Is that the motion?
The motion is to, well, I didn't see what the agenda said. I'm looking at the, at the report, and the motion is to increase the fleet, the alternatively fueled vehicle fleet, by 50% within five years.
Okay. Discussion on the motion? Ms. Irwin.
No. My, obviously, this is a great goal, and, and we are already a leader, but my concern is, first of all, the cost of hybrids and the availability of hybrids with the high cost of fuel makes it very difficult to, I mean, it could potentially really impact our budget. And secondly, I think we're already, in Public Works, they're already working toward increasing the percentage as quickly as you can, and if we mandate it, then I think we could run into cost issues and unintended consequences, where we're maybe going to use an older technology. If we wait a few more years, we could have something newer. Do you not have a problem with this 50%? Is it a 50% mandate, or is it working toward it? To me, a mandate seems like it's really tying your hands.
It is, excuse me, it is true that the hybrids and other types of alternative-fueled vehicles are more expensive, hence the, our commitment to pursuing the grant funding so that we can keep our, our expenses within what, what we're budgeting for vehicle replacements. Certainly, we're, we can look into this and come back with a report on a plan to look at, within five years, getting to that 50% mark, whether that's too restrictive or not. I'm not really able to answer that at this point. I think, I think we need to take a look at that further. Be happy to, to do that and come back with, with additional information for council in the next few months.
I certainly support putting, looking at it, looking at it through a report, but I just want to make sure that we don't really, like I said, for the third time, we don't want to tie the hands of Public Works, you're doing so much good already in, in the alternate fuel situation. So I could support certainly having a report put together by Public Works.
Okay. Did you want to modify your motion? I'm not quite sure you were.
The, I was just wondering, I wasn't aware of a plan per se to increase the fleet to 30% or 33% over the last six years. Was there a plan in place? I don't think there was. It was just a goal that was there, and it had been taking quite a while in reaching the 30% in the six years that I've been with the city. So I'm, I'm just wanting to make sure that we are a little bit more on the ball. This is not a criticism, but that we are really focusing on that.
Maybe the city manager can kind of clarify, you know, go ahead, Mr. Minnick.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the goals and objectives that the council worked on, they talk about environmental programs and doing more, but there's not a specific objective or direction in here to be at a certain percentage. It was more internal, we were striving to be at 30%. We would welcome the opportunity to study going to 50% and then incorporating that as an actual objective. Again, that's just doing the feasibility analysis to see if it's possible, and just as Jay was trying to state, the motivation for this is not necessarily financial. It may end up costing a lot of money to do, but the real motivation should be what's good for the environment. So we would gladly welcome this opportunity.
Well, certainly, I can adjust or change my motion. As the owner of a hybrid, I know that hybrids are available at about $20,000. The maintenance is basically non-existent, other than your regular oil change. And in the four years that I've had my hybrid, I haven't had a single problem. So, and certainly, the city would acquire, as is customary, a service contract or sort of a warranty contract to maintain the vehicles, in fact, the entire fleet. So, but certainly, if it pleases the council, I can change my motion to develop a plan to reach a goal of 50% within five years.
Okay. Ms. Bill de la Peña has a motion. Dr. Clancy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd also be very interested to hear what staff comes up with in, in terms of the increasing inability to find CNG, as Mr. Watkins referred to at the last meeting, and therefore, what additional costs would be incurred to go to an alternate, alternate fuel? Because we do need to remember that there's an element of fiscal responsibility to the people that live here, and while the staff came up with a great budget proposal, it did show some signs that we need to be a little more conscious of, of what we're doing. I certainly agree with Councilwoman Irwin's talks about, Public Works having done, or comments about Public Works having accomplished a fairly decent amount of, of our alternate-fueled vehicles thus far. fueled vehicles thus far, and I'd much rather have a plan to, to evaluate rather than make it a mandate. So I would support the modified motion.
Okay, further discussion? Final comment?
My final comment is, I almost forgot to mention here, May first, a report by the American Run Association evaluating the state of the air two thousand and seven states that Ventura County, with its particular zip code, had an ozone grade of F and a particle pollution grade of a D, which I think we need to take into consideration as well. We had fifty-eight orange ozone days and one red ozone day, which is of course, the worst. So we also have to take into consideration the health of our residents. And with that, those would be my final comment.
Okay. Well, please.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, that is approved. Mr. Mitnick, city manager report.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, by way of follow-up, staff will be following up and holding, or scheduling study sessions to follow up on the, as the budget issues, financial strategic plan. I should point out that it's a natural progression now that you have your goals and objectives, and you have a good foundation for the organization. We look forward to scheduling, taking it to the next step, looking more at the long-term situation. And we, staff will also follow up on the sound wall issue that was raised. In fact, Public Works Director Mark Watkins is still out in the hallway talking to that one lady. So we will follow up and report, come back to council, perhaps even an agenda item. And then looking at the calendar going forward, the next council meeting will be on June 12th with three public hearings, all budget-related, the first being the proposed budget. You heard the study session tonight on the operating budget. A few weeks ago, you had the study session on the capital improvement program. So now those two come together for a public hearing, for public input, and then adoption as necessary by the council. There'll be a public hearing dealing with the landscape and lighting assessment districts, we do that every year, and then the final public hearing dealing with delinquent wastewater liens and the necessity to attach those to the property tax rolls. It only happens to a small number of households every year. Department reports are worth noting, one in particular, and that's follow-up on the Sealy Valley sphere of influence issue that was raised, and staff was given direction, and we're coming back with a report on that on June 12th. That is it for city manager, follow-up and a report.
I think Mr. Gillette has an item on that sound wall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. City Manager, reference, you referenced the Public Works Department's update on the 23 freeway, and one thing I forgot to ask at that time, so I'll ask you at this time, is the, are the resources of the city police department, Ventura County Sheriff's Department being utilized in trying to address the increase of graffiti on the, on the 23 sound wall construction area? We've had a significant increase, we've all, I think, heard from different residents about it. It's kind of a no-person's land. It's a Caltrans construction area, it's state property, and yet the people that are doing this are the people coming out of the neighborhoods, I assume, in that proximity, who are known to our police for the gang affiliations and the gang tagging that's going on. And I just want to make sure that Caltrans is being offered and is accepting that kind of assistance to, to respond to this unsightly damage, because once one of those new walls is tagged, it'll never be the same, because they don't sandblast it now, they just paint over it. So you get this series of ugly patches that we currently have down closer to Hillcrest Drive, and I'd like to see that nipped as close to the bud as possible. And the only way that's going to happen is if our police, our gang resources work in conjunction with Caltrans and figure out ways to get in there, identify it, and respond to it.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember, I'm glad you brought that up, because that's one of the reasons why this item is on the agenda tonight. And yes, the Thousand Oaks Police Department has been working in cooperation with Caltrans and other area police departments. A lot of the graffiti on the 23 has also happened up in Moore Park, and I believe portions of Sealy Valley on the 118, and in some cases, the same perpetrators are involved. So there is a, there's a multi-agency effort here. It's too bad that Captain Penney isn't here, he could comment more thoroughly, but we'll follow up and put something in council mail about it, but we are acutely aware of it, and you are correct, sandblasting is the way to go, and we know that Public Works will prevail with Caltrans in the long haul and get landscaping there, so the landscaping will grow over it. And I would like to add that once the widening is done, the construction is over, the graffiti should be less of a problem. But thank you for pointing that out.
Okay. Ms. Irwin.
I, I was at Public Works Week last week, and they actually no longer sandblast, it's all high-power water. So sandblasting is the incorrect term. There's a concern about the water quality with sand in the water.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Irwin, I apologize for using inappropriate term, and I'll be more careful in the future.
Did she mention she has a degree in engineering?
I think I.
I don't know if you caught that earlier.
I think I heard that.
Very technical.
I see.
Very technical.
Okay, I'm duly impressed.
High speed.
Yes.
Mr. Mitnick, you're done with your report? All right. Okay, that moves us into item fifteen, a closed session, and Ms. Albano will announce four items that council will be dealing with in closed session. Ms. Albano?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public and staff. Council will be going into closed session for public employee performance evaluation for the city attorney pursuant to Government Code Section 54-957 Subsection B1, public employee performance evaluation for the city manager pursuant to Government Code Section 54-957 Subsection B1, conference with labor negotiators, city designated representatives, Mayor Andy Fox and Human Resources Director Connie Hickman, unrepresented employees, city attorney and city manager pursuant to Government Code Section 54-957.6, and lastly, conference with labor negotiators, city designated representative, city manager Scott Mitnick, unrepresented employees, executive managers, again, pursuant to Government Code Section 54-957.6. There will not be anything to report out at the end of those meetings. Thank you.
Okay, since we're not reporting out, that'll bring us to our adjournment, and we'll adjourn tonight's council meeting to our regularly scheduled meeting for June 12th, two thousand and seven. We're adjourned.